Five o'clock on Monday, July 16, 2018. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Tony Corby. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Skokstad-Dietrich.
Here.
Michelle Hebner. Here. Heather McBride.
Here.
Ted McBride.
Saxon.
She sounds sorry. God, Kevin Saxon. Kevin Grover.
Here.
Got it. Please stand up and pledge allegiance.
A little slip there.
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion in a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Anyone for public open forum? Anyone? Moving on. Consent agenda. Approve the consent agenda items as presented. One, approve past many minutes for the regular school board meeting of June 18, 2018. Item two, approve current accounts payable due in the amount of $1,311,929.66. Approve payroll in amount of $45,831.15 for pay period July 6, 2018. Approve membership to Minnesota School Board Association for the 2018-2019 fiscal school year. Approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Item six, re-certify Kevin Grover Superintendent as the district's Iowa-identified official with authority for granting external user access to MDE secured sites. Item seven, receive the FHS and FES student handbooks for approval in August. Item eight, approve agreement with Kuchichin County Public Health and Human Services for coordination of agency services. Item nine, appoint the following individuals to be representatives as follows for 2018-2019. Jody Hamilton for homeless liaison. Kevin Grover, Tal Nine Officer District, alternate Tim Eversen. Melissa Tate, LEE representative for Title I, Title II applications. Four, Tim Eversen, Human Rights Officer, alternate Melissa Tate. Melissa Tate, Section 504 Officer, grades K through five. Alternate Mark Loewett. Item six, Mark Loewett, Section 504 Officer, grades 6 through 12. Alternate Melissa Tate. Item 10, hire Jay Boyle as math team advisor for 2018-2019 season. Item 11, hire Doug Loughian as speech team advisor for 2018-2019 season. Twelve, hire Lori Potter as boys' basketball cheerleader advisor for the 2018-2019 season. Thirteen, approve hire of Jessica Crosby as football cheerleader advisor for the 2018-2019 season. Item fourteen, approve hire of Alex Manasa as boys' hockey cheerleader advisor for the 2018-2019 season. Item fifteen, approve hire of Leonard Bobst as assistant cook effective 2018-2019 school year. Item sixteen, acknowledge Steve Battalion and Keith Bulk as trap team coaches for the 2018-2019 season. Item seventeen, approve meal pricing recommendations for the 2018-2019 school year. Item eighteen, receive 2018-19 Recreation Commission budget. Item nineteen, approve hire of John Reller as assistant boys' basketball coach for the 2018-2019 season. Item twenty, approve Athletic Director Service Agreement with Recreation Commission effective July 18, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Item twenty-one, accept resignation of Karen Bates for her professional effective September 14, 2018. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Oh.
And discussion?
If I can comment on a few things. Number five, the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. We did have to make a few minor changes. We were talking here to each year. The LTFM total should have been $430,985 instead of $439. So we went through, actually Tom's out today, but I went through this morning with Stacy and made some minor changes of $9,000 to some big projects each year to make that number fit. So just if you looked at it and if you look today, a minor tweak. You know, a roofie project that was $200,000 became $191,000. I mean, it gets updated each year. The main thing is, let's say fiscal 20 is the biggie we're looking at, so that. Number seven, you receiving those handbooks? I'm going to point you right to page 18 in the high school handbook. That's the one, if you recall, we had a discussion earlier on the GPA, graduate with honors. I mean, other than that, keep in mind the extension list. You know, things like that aren't updated, but all the policies and things like that that we have. And that's the one, I mean, we talked about it, I don't know when it was, May, April, whenever. To me, that's the big piece that, are we good with where it's at? Do we want change? And again, it doesn't get approved right now, we're just receiving it. But I'm going to need some direction if you want more information from me or if you want me to bring back out what I got from, you know, other schools. There was a, I think, one-page sheet I put together that showed what a variety of districts do and there was no right or wrong answer, it was across the board. But now's our chance. Again, you can change it every year, but I'm just saying that was our argument, that we're not changing it in April, changing the GPA to graduate with honors or whatever. Weighted grading is in there, again, in favor. You know, our kids and our teachers are teaching those courses. So I just point you to that, I'm open to discussion.
Are changes have been highlighted, is that what I'm saying?
I believe so, yes, unless anything is, like I say, but don't, if there's, like I say, the extension or even the table of contents, that hasn't been messed with until everything is done. Number seventeen, meal price recommendations, there's an attachment in here. For the most part, things are staying the same, except sixth grade, we have to update. They're getting high school portions they need, as well as adults and visitors. We can't be, they have to go at the average price, so minor tweak. And I believe in number 20, and I'm just going to point it out in your document that Mr. Mason updated. I think that, I don't know what number it is, but the event coordinator, I think it was at $73 and I think it has to go up because that got increased with the new contract, you know, we're in this. And I don't think it was, so I think that'll be $74 or $75, whatever 2% is on 73. You with me? I just copied that when reading this afternoon. So approve it with the correct amount. Seventy-four forty-six, so I think it would be $74. I don't have the time to track these things, so. And that's all I have. Thank you to, Karen put in a resignation. Thank her for her service.
How many years was she with us for? Quite a few.
I didn't look, and just so you're aware, we put the posting, the paraposting out. Well, it probably went in the mail or will go in the mail tomorrow, but we're going to fill her position for the full year. And whether she helps trade someone or we put her somewhere else. And she may not, you know, as you know, it's in the letter, it said latest would be September 14. It ends up being that, August, I don't know, so. Anything else I can answer on those pieces?
Anything for the discussion?
I guess I would just like to give credit where credit is due. It looks like Carla Olson-Line did her report and I thought, wow, cool, just started and it looks like a very nice report.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to action items. Item one, acknowledge Mike Holden as head wrestling coach for the 2018-19 season. Could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All second.
Any discussion? No? Okay, Mike need to abstain from voting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried, Mike abstained. Item two, resolution acceptance of gifts and donations. The resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations, where a school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received, Falls Recreation Commission for Sheila Field Dugout Project in the amount of $2,500. Box Stop for Education for FHS Student Planners, $100.70. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. All voted in favor.
Do that.
One more?
I don't know my next one. No, there was one that didn't get added. We put it back in.
Okay.
Okay, all voted in favor, whereas the resolution was declared adopted. Item three, approve a salary increase for Rachel Omdahl, Community Education Director, from $50,000 to $59,025.0 annually. Monthly salary increase is $752.10. Retro to June 1, 2018. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All second.
Discussion?
If I can give you some information. Roughly a year ago, when Rachel asked, and I'm going to say asked to come from her teaching position into back into community ed, I directed the Community Ed Advisory Board to start the process. The school board's the only one that can hire and fire, you know, grant a leave, things like that, to see what direction they wanted to go. They were in favor of her coming back. It came to you as a board, we brought her back. At that time, it was asked because we couldn't support a full-time, I mean, this is my recollection, couldn't support a full-time position as well as the four-hour secretary position that we had. So I remember part of the conversation at the advisory committee meeting sheet. Rachel brought it up, would it be possible when Barb retires, if we can, you know, get to a one-person, you know, department, if she can handle it? Could it be looked at, again, to possibly increase salary? And the answer was, can be looked at at any time, you know. So that has happened now. We are not replacing Barb completely as far as community ed. We're replacing the recommendation in what they're hiring for secretary, those two hours, to help community ed. So there is roughly a $9,000 savings. And so, again, I think it's worth, I went back to the Community Ed Advisory Board to get their input. If they, you know, where would you, again, they don't have a right to hire, fire, give raises, that's why it's to us. But I thought they should have some opinion. Do they think it's working good? Is it not working good? Are they improving, you know, programming, things like that? So, met with, well, there were four or five of them that showed up at the meeting, got their input, got some input from Rachel. She left, we had some more conversation and I said, I would like a recommendation. Does she deserve some more? Does she not? Obviously, it comes to the board. Their recommendation isn't what is in front of you to take the savings and apply it to. I don't know what to tell you. I didn't reach out to four, okay, let's go step back. Budget-wise, right now, it would take increasing revenue to cover the whole thing. Could they do it for several years? You know, if things all stayed the same, the answer is yes. I reached out to four superintendents quickly today to see what some other districts, obviously there's a lot more, but I didn't have time to reach out to more. I got information from Virginia, and just give me a rough synopsis. Virginia, the superintendent finds someone to sign off and they just have a secretary or maybe two secretaries in their office running things. They used to have a community ed director slash AD combined position full-time. And I can't say for sure, but I'm thinking since he retired, they haven't, either haven't been able to find a replacement or they just haven't done it. Masabi East, their superintendent can sign off, he gets $9,000 stipend and then they have secretary or secretaries that do the work, so to speak. St. Louis County, they in the past had a director and then a coordinator in each of the five schools. The director got paid health insurance. I think it was, he or she was a teacher, so it was an extra duty and that was their benefit to have paid insurance. And then the coordinators, I'm going to say did the majority work and maybe still have part-time secretaries or secretaries. And then Hibbing, they have a full-time community ed director and it's a sliding scale, four, five, six steps, and it's higher than where we're at. It's in the $70,000 range, starting and going up. The question I guess I throw, and I guess the piece, in order to be community ed director, I believe you need a master's degree and then the certification. I went online, it was 24 credits. If you just went, if you didn't have a principal's license, superintendent's license, it would be 24 Christ above your master's. So that's kind of the question of where would a person with that stuff be? And I did grab, just because I kind of thought of it as I was walking out of the office. Our master's degree starts at step one at 46,355. Step one, step 10 is 69,552. Again, to get the 24 credits, you would be over a ways. And so I'm just throwing that out there to think about is...
For masters, is it, what is it, masters plus 10? Is there one of those on that?
Yeah, and I can pass this now, I could have made copies. On step one, no experience, you know, first year experience is 47,358, 48,364 for masters plus 20.
Masters plus 20 is 48?
Yeah, that's one, you're brand new. You know, if you go down to the bottom, it's 72,586 for that master's. If you want to see the thing, let's pass it down to look at. To me, that's the question. It's...
And Rachel has been there one year, so she would be considered step one? Is that what?
Well, she was, while she was there now, she was there, I'd have to go back four or five years ago as director coordinator, you know, before she went into teaching, she also did kind of a combined position.
And what does she have for...
Right now, she's at $50,000.
$50,000.
That's what was negotiated.
Yeah, but what does she, she have a master's and...
Yeah, she's a licensed director and she went, I don't know, Kevin, do you remember what year? I mean, it was when Don Lienan was here, we needed someone. He got a waiver for a year or two and Rachel went and got her qualification or got her certification. I think that's when it was. What's that?
She was, she was already clean at the end of missing camp, seven years ago, so.
Yeah, so, but then would she start teach three years or four?
I'm thinking three, she's a 10-year.
Four.
Four, you know, so I mean, she has, she has experience, you know. So it's, you know, part of the, you know, take down the jury, but it's also what's that true work?
$9,000 is a lot of money, you know. That's the first thing I looked at. I was kind of waiting to hear from you what you thought about that because, you know, raises that you see around, you don't see raises at $9,000, so. I kind of questioned that. Plus, you know, if you give out $9,000 like that, is there going to be other people coming in because of extra duties they have and stuff, you know? Next thing you know, you got all kinds of people coming and asking for raises, so. I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but for me, I've never seen a $9,000 raise.
Where do the funds come from though? I mean, when we tie in community ed, is her salary paid from community ed?
From community, from that. But again, keep in mind, community ed, just like many things, I mean, community ed runs, you know, the preschool program, there's school readiness, there's, there's several areas. Her salary, pieces, bits and pieces come out of each one. Just like community ed, right now, there's $33,000 and some dollars in reserve. Theoretically, it could be less than that. I mean, we could even more money for preschool instead of using more general. But on the other hand, having that, you know, no money in there hasn't been really a stand, you know, we take what we can, but yet keep them, you know, at a fair place. So, I mean, it's kind of, you know...
What happens two years from now when community ed isn't bringing in those funds? Or if their funds are reduced, what happens then?
And we look at, how can we run a program? I mean, that, that is not well-positioned, you got to keep that in mind. This, this director is, and I mean, it could go to a part-time, it could, you know, it's just like, and I'm just throwing it out, just like if she quit, you know, we have to figure out how, because I don't think anyone in the district, you know, you advertise, you can't get anyone. I suppose I'd be going and looking if I can get a license and, you know, and then you add...
Or add in a waiver.
Well, waiver, whatever, but, or, and then do we get one secretary or, you know, two people? Or how do we, you know, it's run in many different combinations. And the big piece, I guess from my standpoint, is I think we have a very good community ed department. You know, I can't speak, I haven't been a lot of other places, but I think, you know, some of these others that aren't doing anything, you know, they're getting minimal services. They might be running preschool, but they don't have a lot of programming. Because if you don't have someone leading it, I mean, I think Rachel does a good job. I mean, there's, that's not the question at mind. To me, the question at mind is what is that director position worth? And I, like I say, I really don't, other than looking at comparative on the teacher's salary, really know where to go. Most places aren't paying, I don't think $70,000. I mean, most aren't the Hibbing, you know, model that I'm, but I'm not, you know, Minneapolis and those, who knows? But I'm talking northern Minnesota. Most are, we struggle to get people with license, you know, either a superintendent has a license, a principal, or you're small enough that the superintendent can just sign off. But then, you know, you have other people doing the, you know, doing the work and it can be good and it can be maybe not as good.
Well, I guess another thing to think about is, she accepted this position one year ago at the salary that we offered her. And now it's one year later and, yes, she's going to be taking on, you know, a little bit more duties, but we've asked many people in district to take on more duties with zero compensation. So I struggle with compensating her that much for taking some additional duties on.
And then Kevin, I would also, I would like to ask, is how, are our numbers, do they, are they going up in community ed, the number of students or the number of participants, I would say?
It was, it was one of the questions that went or came up in the advisory comments last, the same thing. Programming looks to be going up more and more was offered, but they don't have the data right now to show if actually more, you know, more things were offered, more classes ran, but the revenue hasn't come up with it. What it means is a lot more things I think were offered at a, you know, if I say this correctly, at a lesser value, you know, maybe just painting class after school for an hour that costs $5. Maybe we had 10 kids in there and they had a bunch of those compared to less offerings but at a higher value. The revenue didn't fall. More, more people...
Couldn't we see the numbers even from like two years and three years ago? Is it slowly going this way or slowly going that way or kind of numbers? I'm talking to participants, not dollars.
I can see what they have. I know the discussion when, you know, we're at the committee, looked at recommending Rachel come back. Their concern was programming was declining over the last few years. Whether that's, you know, I don't know if they true, I'd have to ask with them, I don't have...
I'm on the community ed board and she's, my feeling is that she is growing the program. She's offering a lot more and she's really putting a lot of energy into growing the program. So, like Kevin said, it's not about her performance because I'm, I think she's doing a fabulous job. She's reaching out to more people in the community, bringing more classes in. My concern is this is a 19% raise and where do you get a 19% raise? Are we able to negotiate this? Are we able to offer her something less than this?
You cannot. This is what was recommended, we can, like I say...
So if we, if we don't pass this, we can, next month, we could come back with something different?
Against that whole position, we can, I mean, she has one, she can take her options, you know, whatever they may be. Yes, this is why this was brought, because this is what the advisory committee recommended and isn't the exact amount I recommended. I thought it was worth something, but I'm more on the other hand of, you know, is it four? Is it five? And see if we can sustain it, you know, because even this or even that, you got to increase revenue. You need to, in order for this to be able to continue on down the road, revenue's got to come up. So, again, I think it's worth, because if you don't let the advisory committee give their input, you know, I don't believe we have a committee. And again, it's the board's hire and fire, you know, and raises and stuff, but it's worth.
Kevin, I guess no matter what we decide, vote or table or whatever, I think that what we have to, be careful that we say it correctly. And I think saying for the same position and increase is not it. It's, we do have to recognize that she is taking on other duties and if we don't even give her any increase in salary, I think we have to recognize it as part of a thank you to take on more duties from Barb's duties. We at least ordered that.
Well, I guess I would look at it going back to, I agree, she knew going in, we could not sustain both, you know, pay more and have a four-hour secretary and we needed both at the time because Rachel didn't have the qual, you know, didn't have the experience and all that Barb does. So, that being said, the bigger question is not so much looking at you're getting paid for more duties. What is a community ed director in a school our size working? I mean, that's the reality. If you have to go out and get a master electrician to do work here, what's the going rate? You know, for, to me, that's the big question. Whether she does it for a year or two until Barb retired, you know, I had less than it was worth? That's she agreed to. But now is the opportunity to truly find out what is this, like I say, masters plus however many credit, 24, what's that worth? You know, and be done with it for good and for all. I mean, $50,000 is the right value? If that's the right value. If it's $60,000, if it's whatever it is, to me, that's the question.
Right, but thank you is, is any...
Well, no, it is, but there's, just like, just like other people taking on extra duties, sometimes there's compensation, sometimes it's your salary, get it done.
Sometimes it's a verbal thank you too, is what I'm trying to...
Oh, yeah.
Sure, yeah.
But, and again, I would reiterate, this is not a, and I guess I'm going back to Heather, this is not a, whichever direction it goes, I think our community ed department's running, right?
Oh, yeah.
You know, and whether it's, this doesn't go and we look at maybe not changing something, maybe changing it in a different way, that's not what a yea or nay vote on right here. I don't think, I mean, the, I think it's running well. If you approve it, it's not because it's running well. If you don't approve it, it's not because it's running well. You with me? I mean, this is, was brought to you and, like I said, we'll either go or we'll go back and see where to go.
Did Rachel ask for this increase or is this the community?
No, no, she, she approached me because like I said, again, it was discussed when she was originally hired, but we could not, you know, afford both and we needed both because Barb had dumb stuff that others had. And so, could it be looked at when she left? And the answer is yes, it can be looked at at any time. And so, when Barb resigned from that position, she wanted it looked at. And I said, the place to start is to approach your advisor committee. They don't agree with it. You know, it's hard for, again, we make, you make the decision, but I think it's worth their input. So that's where it started and this is where it's come to. And like I say, approve, deny, direct me to look differently, get more info from other districts, whatever it may be.
I apologize for coming late. Did you find some?
I got four today and I'll just quickly recap in no specific order. Masabi East, their superintendent gets a $9,000 stipend and then they have a secretary or secretaries that truly do the work. Virginia used to have an AD, Athletic Director, Community Ed Director combined position. That person retired. I don't know if they hired anyone in between, but right now, they don't have a community ed director. The superintendent gets someone to sign up on the final report, what he has to pay the person. I have no idea. And then they have secretaries in the office running, you know, or people in the office running the programs and doing the programming. St. Louis County had a director for their five schools and then each school had a coordinator. The coordinator made a roughly $10,000. Again, these are part-time positions or on top of something. The director got paid health insurance, was that person's, they were a teacher, had the license, so they did above and beyond. And then, which one am I missing? Hibbing has like a six, five, six-step salary schedule and... Hibbing has like a six, five, six step salary schedule and around seventy thousand and going up for their full-time director. And that's, there's only four I reached out to, and each of them got back. I don't know a whole lot more about that. And like I said, can get more or, you know, and I'm sure like I mentioned, Minneapolis, you know, some of the big, big school, I mean, totally different situation. I was looking for things up kind of in our neck of the woods.
You know, going forward, it'd be interesting to know on a monthly basis, the programming details, like what programs are offered, uh, number of attendees, revenue generated.
And again, I think that you can help me out, I mean, isn't there, I used to go to the quarterly meetings and there was, you know, there was data given every time, you know?
But I think Michelle's right, you know, we need to see that stuff. You know, we got two members that sit on, on that board, but the rest of us are voting on this stuff. It comes to the school board and we'd like to see it too, you know? So we got an idea too. Rachel's doing a good job, but nine thousand dollars, I mean, that's unheard of. I, I have a hard time with that. We got people sitting here that have gotten extra duties too, that didn't get compensated. So, I mean, it's really hard to, you know, nine thousand bucks, that's, that's a lot, so.
Any further discussion?
So are we able to gather some more information, bring this back next month?
What, look, we need, yeah, we'll vote on, if it goes somewhere fine, if it doesn't, I'll probably ask for some direction.
All right, we have a motion and a second on favor. I'll post.
All right.
Aye. Motion carried.
Can I ask what you would like, um, you know, for my direction? I mean, you want me to look at anything?
I would say just some data going forward. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to people being compensated fairly, but as I said, when she signed on for this position, I mean, it, it was fair because she took the job.
And basically, she is brand new. She's got one year, right?
A couple.
Or a couple of years.
Yeah, and then she had a couple of years prior, before she went into, back into teaching. I don't know exactly what year, but...
Really, so...
I know you're saying that she took this job at this pain, but the duties have changed a little bit. So it'd be interesting to kind of see what she's doing that's extra.
They are, but, um, remember when Sue retired and we dippied up her entire job with zero compensation to anyone?
I know.
That's what I have a hard time with. You know, those people took on a lot of duties.
Yeah, they did, lots.
Nothing.
The other thing is that if it is a requirement for masters plus twenty, then that's a different requirement that she had, the school district didn't pay for her plus twenty or anything or her masters. I would assume she paid for all that herself, which is more than what a teacher's required to have. So, I, I mean, I just want to look at all of it. I'm not sure that I'm for or against it right now, but I guess I want to look at all that. I want us to think about that. Masters plus twenty is a different requirement than the teacher's requirement. In all fairness, we should look at it. I think it needs to be tabled, so.
Not quite sure where I'm going. I'll figure out between now and next month. I know I'll have conversation with.
In the end, just reviewing data on a monthly basis for sure would be good.
Yeah, I agree.
And do we have any positions? No. Does someone else have any positions in comparable districts that require a masters plus twenty that's not a director, I mean, a community ed director? Is there something else that says, okay, you got to have that?
Well, the only thing I can, only thing I can think of is, you know, just like a special ed director, that again is you need a masters and it's a license above that. You know, your principals are going to need, you know, masters and then go get their principal license and you need so many years of teaching.
Right, but how many more credits is that? I don't know.
It's more than the twenties.
More than twenty?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, this is another thing to look at.
The comparables that you gave us today weren't really comparable. You know, if we could find someone that has a job just like her.
I don't know that anybody, I mean, everybody is a little bit different. You know, everybody's program is different and, I mean, even just looking out and seeing what people...
Look at ours, it's been different.
Have for what they offer, you know, versus what they put into it, you know? That's probably maybe a better representation. Okay, moving on. Uh, item four, approved leave of absence request for Tammy Jones, paraprofessional for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year.
So moved.
Discussion?
It's, the language allows for it in the, um, parent contract. I don't know how many times ago we got it, we got a few people do it. It's a one-year leave.
Yep.
Need to notify, you'll see in the letter she provide you, she knows she has to notify you by February first if she plans on coming back. So I would recommend we've done it for a few years.
All right, on favor?
All right.
I'll post, motion carried. Administrative reports, what's the thing?
I don't have a lot to report. We did interview for secretaries today, committee men, so we'll have a name coming soon. We haven't talked to any candidates yet, but our committee meant to do that. And our, the elementary gym looks really nice, it got repainted this summer, so if you have time, stop in and see that, it looks really nice. Other than that, I don't think we really have a lot. Get ready for me, where?
Tim?
Our enrollment right now, and these are soft numbers because we have kids who are, have moved and we haven't gotten no education yet, and we have some coming back that we don't know about or moved here. Uh, we're five sixty-three, that's down forty from, um, at the end of last school year. We're down thirty-seven from last year at the same time. And that's just a big change in our senior class. We had a hundred and four last year. And we're in June actually, the end of the year, and we only have D's. So they switch and we also have a small sixth grade class, so that's where that number dropped.
So we're close to projections, so what we're projected?
Yeah, we're, we're pretty much where we thought we were going to be. Uh, we're working right now to fill our last vacancies. We have the choir position, which is a part-time position. We're working on, working with the candidate who's interested in returning to girl licensure and schooling. And paraprofessional bumping meeting is set for ninety AM on Thursday the second of August in the high school cafeteria. Isn't it the elementary thing? Oh, elementary, sorry.
Okay, any else?
On the library.
Kevin?
Uh, I just pass down to you and, um, just so you're aware, I don't, not looking for your agreement or disagreement, I was asked, I don't know, I, I know Michelle, the board chair, got a request as well, but Koochin County is putting in a grant. This has to do with the, um, trying to get some options figured out for the train tracks out on the Van Lynn Road out there and, um, from an overpass and/or a through road, I guess. And they asked from the school's standpoint, would we be interested in putting a letter of support in? And from my standpoint, I did put a letter of support, you know, from a safety standpoint. I know people are not in favor, I'm just going to say, some people are not in favor of a through road, it cuts their property. I'm not looking, I just wanted you aware that, you know, getting a bus not going over tracks would be a benefit. And I mean, and not the bus not being delayed by the train, whether going out, going back. So I just wanted you aware, and, and again, I'm not asking for any individual board members to write letters or anything else, but from a safety standpoint and a work standpoint, one of the options or both would be a benefit to the school. So I just want, just in case someone lies in the school or, you know, representing the school writing that, that letter, that's the reason is, you know, I didn't put in there, I'm in favor of one or the other or both, but it would be a benefit to us not to be run into the train and not have, you know, our buses can cross train tracks just fine, but there's always that risk. What's that? They're talking about continuing on, actually coming out to, like somewhere out by, ringing like one stop or somewhere in that, I don't know exactly, so. They're putting in grant applications and I wanted you aware of that, so. Secondly, um, I was approached by, where am I at here? Amy Mortenson. There's a learning tree program that they've done for several years. She works for Cutaska and it's collecting supplies for needy students. Some are ours, some are St., they're county students. And, um, their idea, committee or whatever, is to do, kind of like the, fill the ambulance, stuff the ambulance or whatever, would be to do a stuff a bus somewhere in town and do. And I don't see an issue, obviously, I'm, just giving you a heads up, I'm going to let them use a bus. We will deliver it, meaning Tom or one of the driver, you know, whether it's for a night or a weekend or whatever, you know, this and that, but I, I think it's, you know, a good promotion. It helps our kids or whatever, but unless someone perceives a major issue or, and the reason, I just want you aware, unless you think there's, you know, shouldn't do it, but I think it's a good cause, so, and it helps our students. Arena, just giving you a heads up, things seem to be going just fine. They poured some cement on the corners the other day. The whole thing gets done in one shot, I was over there. They're putting the heating pipes down right now, all the supply lines are in. Talked to the engineers today, they were finishing their, the recommendations on the two pumps that need to be replaced. It's, it's going well here. It's going to change drastically every day now. They will have the heat pipes in today, they'll be filled with water and pressure tested tonight. Tomorrow, they'll start putting sand over it and the insulation goes on top. And then, I want to call it, he called it a slip coat. It's like a vapor barrier, it's not for vapor, but the cement sits on that, so if the cement moves, it doesn't eat away at the insulation. Then the rebar and all that stuff and the other pipes, so. They say we're still on track, so roughly the end of July, it should be poured, so. Like I said, feel free to stop in and take a gander, don't bother.
Don't sound Mike in there, could be bad.
And the last thing, um, I got information again, and I don't know, maybe I dropped the ball. Last year, I brought this to you and I, I did send a link out to school board evaluation for all of us. The school, uh, MSB came out with a process a year ago, free to the district. But the catch twenty-two to it is, if we do it, everyone has to do it, otherwise they won't supply the results. I did it last year and I'm sure some of you did, but we got no results and I checked. And the reason was, we never got everyone to do it. So I don't know if you want to do it or not, because what they want to do is have two people, they're not going to send the result. They want either six or all, meaning six board members and myself or seven, it has to be everyone. So is it something you want free? I send a link, you do it at your own computer and then we get info and then bring it back to us.
Try it again.
Try it again?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I want to say it took twenty, twenty-five minutes, if I recall, last year. Maybe I didn't put much time into it or maybe I put a lot of time. That's all I have.
Kevin, I have one question about the, um, community-wide safety meeting, is that in August?
We don't have a date, so I reached out to Willie again yesterday to see if he had any more info. I forget the guy that came up and presented. He, he was out of town at a training, so I'm going to set another meeting. I don't have it set right now. I mean, I can set it for any date, obviously, that we're here. I just didn't know, I want to say Randy Johnson, I don't know if that's the guy's name or not. I wanted to know if he wanted to be part of this or not, or if Willie had anything else, you know, in the pop or if you will, for the area schools, because that's what our last meeting was, was, um, schools and different officials all together. And he doesn't have any in right now, so I will set a meeting for our local group.
And you'll let, would you put that in?
I will let you know, yeah.
Anything else? And let us know here, any committee reports?
Uh, for the rec committee, um, all we, it was a short meeting last time. We evaluated some of the committees that we had and, um, came up with a new programming committee and a budget and finance committee and also, um, uh, I don't know what it was called, but tech, like a human resource salary committee. And those were all filled by people that were there. And other than that, um, approved the joint pot, we finalized the joint powers agreement, but I heard the city had some problems with it. Okay, so we'll probably be voting on it.
We'll do that on Wednesday.
Okay. And that's pretty much it, it was a short meeting.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Uh, we need to close the session to perform the performance evaluation of Kevin Grover, superintendent. Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Uh, five forty-five. All right, we reopened the session at six-ten. And we went through, uh, performance evaluation of Kevin Grover, superintendent. And I would just like to provide a, a quick summary, uh, that we went through each of the goals and Kevin has performed at a accomplished or distinguished level in all goals. And we would just like to thank Kevin for another year of job. Well done and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, hold second.
On favor?
All right.
Aye. I'll post, motion carried.